Can people hear me? It says my mic's on. Yeah, okay, great. All right. Welcome to our special session. I want to, again, thank you all for coming. I'm just gonna start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we gather at Santa Rosa Junior College on the territorial traditional land of the Pomo people in Santa Rosa and the Coast Miwok people in Petaluma, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the people who have stewarded it through the generations. So we have one item on this special meeting, and that's a faculty and staff ethnic diversity annual update. And we're gonna have a presentation, and then we'll have public comment, and then we'll have an opportunity for the board to give comments and ask questions and have a discussion. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn the meeting over to our Vice President of Human Resources, Jean Durand and Sarah Hopkins. Thank you.
I think I'm gonna open it up if it's okay. Yeah, I wanna thank everybody for being here today, and this is something the board has requested from the administration and my cabinet. And this is something that we introduced many years ago when Karen Furkau was here. And with the appointment of Jean Durand about a year and a half ago, Jean suggested that we do this on an annual basis. So today, you're gonna hear a summary of a lot of data, things that we have done in terms of trying to support and accommodate and be a better anti-racist college. I want you to know that this is the beginning of a conversation, not the end of a conversation. And that whatever questions are raised by the board and by the college community, we are willing to listen and try to make you better. So I think in that spirit, this is a good opportunity to begin the conversation. And I'll turn it over to Jean Durand. For many of you who haven't had a chance to work with Jean, Jean came in during the COVID. He didn't have a lot of chance to meet people in person. And we're delighted to have him. I'm also delighted to see Sarah Hopkins here as well from HR. She is a longtime dedicated team member, and she has been working on diversity issues for many years. And so I just wanna welcome them, and I'll turn it over to Jean and to Sarah. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Chong. So good afternoon, Board President Battenfield, Trustees, Dr. Chong, and all our friends and colleagues from the JC College community. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. And as Dr. Chong mentioned, I think it's important that we annually come back to the board and just review exactly where we've been, where we are, and where we anticipate being, especially, you know, with as it relates to faculty and staff diversity and our inclusion, access, and anti-racist initiatives and progress. So what we have for you today is a five-year longitudinal study. And the presentation will be really broken up into three parts. In the first part, we're gonna go through some of our DEIA initiatives, summarize the efforts that we've made, look at the progress that we've made. And as Dr. Chong mentioned, you know, we're sort of mid-conversation on this. I'm not sure that the work is ever done, but we are gonna look at the end as to where we are and what the targets are, and just remind ourselves of why we do this work and what the purpose is for the sake of our students and our community. The middle part of the of the presentation will be the data on that. So with that, we will go to the first slide. And what we have here is just sort of a review of some of the things that we've done. The one thing I want to point out the most is the work that has been done recently with the board policy on faculty hiring. And that was done in collaboration with the Academic Senate and the board. And what I think we are should be all be particularly proud of is the inclusion in that language of the board policy on hiring of inclusion and access and anti-racist goals in there, including that in pedagogy. We are also undertaking a review of hiring for academic administrators. So we'll first be working with SEIU because there's some language in there that we need to have some conversations about, and hopefully incorporate Classified Senate, and then review that again with the same lens, DEIAA. And I think it is important to remember when it comes to diversity, inclusion, access, and anti-racism, that it's not so much a place out here that is separate from the district. What we're looking to do is to incorporate the lens of inclusion, access, and anti-racism in everything that we do, everything that we do with each other as colleagues, and in particular, everything that we do with our students. So I think it's important to remember that it really is the incorporation of it in in the culture of the college. The other thing we want to talk about on this slide is usually our associate faculty ranks tend to be a really exceptional pool for full-time faculty candidates. So it's important that they are diverse, that they're representative of our community, and that they're highly skilled. In the past, I know we have done some open fairs prior to full-time faculty recruitments going forward in the spring. We are looking to enhance that. Traditionally, they've been done with the Academic Senate, so we're looking to enhance that to make sure that they are valuable, that it's sort of a grow-your-own-progress-and-process as we go forward. And I'll turn it over to Sarah to continue with the rest of the slide.
Thank you, Jean, and good afternoon, members of the board, college community. And I'm pleased to be able to share some of the highlights that the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee has worked on with human resources to improve inclusiveness in our hiring and retention practices. So Jean shared a little bit about the Associate Faculty Recruitment Open Houses. So that was one of the first efforts that we did several years ago. And the Advisory Committee also implemented what we called college recruiting events, which is where members of the district would attend recruiting fairs at other institutions to talk to students about what it would be like to consider employment opportunities at the district. So our first two events were at CSU East Bay and UC Berkeley. And then we also followed up this past year with an event at a historically black college and university. And we do have plans to continue that effort to expand that program. So that's definitely been a highlight. We've also done a review of our hiring processes from recruitment advertising sources all the way through to the end. So we've expanded our advertising sources to include sources such as Handshake, which is an online source for recruiting recent college graduates. We've also done some targeted advertising or extra advertising with historically black colleges and universities, and also several diversity-focused publications. And then, of course, we encourage our college community to serve this purpose as well in terms of being out there and be doing outreach to our candidates, to our college community about what it's like to work at the college so that they can hopefully promote those opportunities for us. In terms of the hiring committees, we've also expanded the training to de-emphasize preferred qualifications that may exclude candidates, such as preferring a doctorate degree where that might narrow the pool, and also encouraging hiring committees to be more inclusive in terms of the candidates that are invited to interview. Our hiring orientation has been much improved over the years to incorporate detailed training on how unconscious bias affects hiring decisions and the importance of equity-mindedness in terms of the candidates that we hire who work at the college in order to best support our students. We also implemented a committee monitor program several years ago, which was an opportunity for objective, non-voting members of our college community to serve as monitors on hiring committees to ensure very high fair hiring practices. And that program was actually expanded several years ago and improved to encourage classified professionals to serve as monitors to get some later leadership experience in serving in that role. So those are a few efforts in terms of our hiring process itself. And then just to give a little bit more detail about the other bullets on this slide, the EEOAC also implemented a diversity and inclusion climate survey in 2018, which was an opportunity to survey our students and our employees about what the climate was like at Santa Rosa Junior College at that time. And then the results of that survey were used to inform what we called a solution forum that was sponsored by the EEOAC to delve into the responses from that survey of it. And many of the suggestions have been used to inform a lot of the improvements that we're gonna be sharing with you today. At the last program I'd like to highlight that's been done in collaboration with the EEOAC and human resources has been the Administrator Diversity Mentorship Program, which came about with the college recruiting affair fair event that we did at UC Berkeley. So this was a program where UC Berkeley grads and postgrad students could have an opportunity to be paired up with SRJC managers to learn what it was like to be an administrator in a community college environment, and also for them to gain some tips and practical experience in getting a glimpse of what that would be like. And plans are underway to continue that program, hopefully in the spring. So as a result of a lot of these efforts, SRJC was recognized as a model institution this summer in the Chancellor's Office EEO Best Practices Handbook, which is quite a highlight for us as an institution. And we've also been recognized for three years as the only community college to be the recipient of the Higher Education Excellence in Diversity Award, which was sponsored by the Insight into Diversity publication. We've been a recipient for three years. So I'd like to just take a moment to recognize my college, my colleague, Susanna Sidney, for her efforts in promoting these efforts. If it were not for Susanna, we would not be where we are today. She is the HR liaison to the EEOAC Committee, and she was also nominated by her HR colleagues throughout the state as the Chancellor's Office EEO Advisory Committee Representative. So Susanna was hired into a position that was the first of its kind at the college, manager of employment equity. And that's morphed into more than we could have ever expected, and I just want to express my appreciation to Susanna.
Well deserved.
All right. Okay, so embracing a culture of inclusion program is something that hopefully you all have heard a lot about over the years. And this program was developed by employees of the district who wanted to offer professional development opportunities on DEIA topics and community-building opportunities as well. So we have offered numerous workshops and trainings over the years, which have been incorporated into our new hire employee orientations, and also expanded to what we called new hire mixer events during the pandemic, which was a virtual opportunity for our new hires to get to know each other and sort of get acclimated in creating a sense of belonging at the college. We created a video on why inclusion matters at SRJC. We also developed a website for what we call ECI, and we were recognized as the outstanding program with the Council for Staff Development a few years back. So this program has led to the collaboration with our employee affinity groups. It's been instrumental that ECI is a vehicle for implementing some of the actions that the affinity groups would like to see come about, starting with two workshops that were offered, starting last fall, improving hiring and retention practices, and then also leading inclusive meetings. And the most exciting opportunity that we have to share with you today is something that has been the highlight of my career here at the college in the past 30 years, which is the development of the Courageous Leaders Academy. Did you want to introduce that before I go into the detail?
Let's go to the next slide. Back and forth a little bit. I think it's important. When we look at this, so what this slide is are the components of the Leadership Academy. And, you know, beginning with an introduction, sort of a self-assessment, understanding cultural humility, which is really important, implicit stereotypes, and microaggressions, because sometimes those happen without the individual understanding the deep impact it has on individuals. It can be sort of a death by a thousand cuts. It might be subtle. They might be socially acceptable in certain areas, but they can be incredibly harmful. And then, of course, you know, as we look at, you know, white privilege and courageous conversations, and especially allyship, because sometimes when we talk about diversity, inclusion, access, and anti-racism, we wonder if you're not diverse, what's what's your place? And I think allyship in itself is huge, it has a huge impact in who we are as an institution. The other thing I want to point out about each of these, each of these sections, is they're building blocks of anti-racist work from self-assessment, assessing each of our implicit stereotypes and how that affects us in the work and in our relationships. How, how, if you don't do that, the microaggressions might lead to a negative impact on individuals. And then also allyship. So I agree with Sarah. I think this is really an important framework, not only for the Leadership Academy, but for all the other professional development that we do, that there is a piece of each one of these things and all the conversations we have when we're engaging with our colleagues through professional development or engaging with students, and especially when we engage with our community. So they understand that not only do we talk about this, but we actually do it. So I just wanted to point that out. I think it's important.
So another collaboration that we implemented in August with the affinity groups was for ECI to assist the affinity groups in sponsoring a affinity group new hire welcome reception. And so this was a great opportunity for the affinity groups to get to know our new colleagues, to have some tabling, some good food, building community, reconnecting with the reopening with the pandemic. And so it was a very exciting event for us, and I just want to share, sorry. Here's a few photos from the event, just to give you a glimpse of all the happy faces. And we hope that this will continue and be at a minimum an annual event where we will be able to offer the same type of opportunity for our college community.
And and I think it's important to remember when this happened in suggesting and overseeing this event. What was important to me is as we came out of the pandemic and we were reopening the campus is that we, you know, sort of reconnected with individuals, and in particular, reconnected with the culture of SRJC, the openness, the inclusion, and the access. So we're looking forward to repeating this in the coming years. So professional development and PDC.
So our Professional Development Committee is obviously fully committed to wanting to offer DEI opportunities for our college community. And we actually, we converted pretty quickly to an online, what we call PDA Day during the pandemic, and we were the recipient of another award for the conversion of that event. The award was called the Innovative Activity Award, which was also through, for CSD, the California Community College Council for Staff Development. For Fall PDA, we continued that effort in terms of inviting Tim Wise to be our plenary presenter for PDA. And then we are planning on definitely continuing that effort into Spring PDA. We have Dr. George Salu as the Towser Lecturer, and we will have an emphasis on DEIA topics at PDA. One of the projects, which will be an outcome of the Courageous Leaders Academy, is focused on developing a cultural enrichment series and DEIA training series. So that will be an ongoing effort. And then, of course, our Academic Senate has their communities of practice that they've implemented, which offers ongoing DEIA training opportunities.
So there's, and we have some information on some additional progress that we've made. And I think what's really important is in working with the Academic Senate to make sure that equivalency is based in anti-racist procedures and practices. We've updated webpages to make sure that we're communicating out our diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives and our successes and the process that we're doing. I know in the past, the Board of Trustees has done a supporting effective hiring and employment practice plan, looking to see if we can update that. And in particular, with Dr. Chong's leadership, is the addition of the Council for Racial Equity to the President's Consultation Council, so really giving the groups a position and a place and a platform with which to engage with everyone in the leadership in the groups on campus. So now let's look at some numbers. So what you see here is a table. It's a five-year longitudinal study, starting in 1718. And you'll see that for each year, there's a column of applicant pools, broken down by category, with the number at the bottom of total ethnic diversity, and then the number of individuals hired from that pool. And we break this down by each employee group. The first slide here is for contract faculty recruitments. And I want to, in particular, point out the bottom of the slide, total ethnic diversity. So in the hired category in 1718, it was about 17.6, a little over 17 and a half percent. And it will go up and down depending on the number of positions that are hired in the pools, and then going across and this last one. And remember that this is for each fiscal year. So these, this is for individuals that were hired up until the end of June this year. The cohort that was hired this year will be on next year's report. And in 2122, our total diversity for those individuals hired was 45.45%. But in particular, if you look at the diversity of the applicant pool, that's something that we focus on a lot. And so regardless of the hires, we want to make sure that we're reaching out anywhere and everywhere that we can to reach very qualified individuals from all levels of identities and ethnicities to ensure that they see and understand Santa Rosa Junior College as a great place to work and understand the opportunity here to work with students and to affect the community. So I think that's important. The next thing we'll slide, we'll look at is the total diversity for the current contract faculty demographic for the population. And so we highlighted in yellow the changes over the years, from 1718, starting at 24%, 2021 bumped up to 25%, and for 2122, 26%. So we are seeing seeing some some efforts paying off in the number and in the faculty employee group. And the thing about for faculty in particular is it is somewhat incremental. Yes, the district did do a retirement incentive, but because of tenure and we actually value the long tenure of faculty, the changes are gonna be somewhat on an incremental basis. So going up a couple of percents every year is actually pretty significant progress. The next one we'll see is for associate faculty. And as I mentioned at the beginning, we really should be looking at our associate faculty employee group as a great recruiting ground for full-time faculty hires. It's interesting, when I look at this, to me, I see an opportunity to work with those individuals who are hiring associate faculty to ensure that we have robust pools and that all individuals are being assessed appropriately, and that there's nothing in the process that might be hindering the diversity of the hires. And so I think with associate faculty in particular, I do believe there is a really a great opportunity for this district to increase its inclusion and access for individuals. And so that, when I look at this, I just wanted to point that out because I think when we look at a group of employees where the diversity in total is 20%, that group of employees has the lowest diversity of any employee group. And I think in, if we're truly being successful, it would be higher, in all honesty. So I just wanted to point that out. So let's look at management team. So it's interesting to look, management teams generally are usually pretty diverse groups. And so from 1718, 33, 34% in the applicant pool, that stayed pretty steady. Some years, it's been a little bit higher. And the hiring is went from 20% in 1718 to 33%. In some years, it's upwards of 50%, but there's, it's generally not a large population of employees that we are hiring. And if you look at the next slide, you will see that even as a management group, just at the very, very bottom, it is a smaller pool. So just a couple of individuals hired can really change the numbers. So in 1718, the headcount was at 99, we're down to 76. But even through all of that, the diversity percentage has increased from 28% to 37% over the last five years, which is really, again, congratulations. I've only been here a little over a year. So congratulations to everyone who's affected that. And I think those are the things that Sarah was talking about and really pointing out the work that Susanna has done on all of this. So let's look at our classified recruitments. Again, the classified population is generally very diverse. And so from 1718, 16% upwards, and I'm sorry, 41% and then 47% in 2122. So it has held pretty steady, and generally, that is a good thing. I think one thing we can also do are maybe some marketability and workshops for classified individuals who are interested in working at the college to have an open house to come here and see who we are. Because sometimes actually our hiring process, because it is so described in our, in the policies, can be a little jarring for individuals who are used to private industry, who are used to just, my friend has this, or here's my resume, and they'll get hired on the spot. That doesn't happen here. So sometimes there's a little bit of impatience, and we might lose some people in steps because they're probably applying for multiple places. But I do believe with an open house and having people come onto our campus and be able to talk to us and seeing what a great place we are to work, seeing what our benefits are, seeing, you know, the retirement system, we'll have the ability to attract an even more robust and diverse classified group. And so if you look at classified professionals, it's held pretty steady in the 30%, so 34 in 2017, and sorry, in 1718 to 38% in 2122. And I do think we can actually make some inroads there and even increase that diversity as well. So that's important. So let's go. I put the slide here just as a reminder, you know, because some people have asked, I think we mentioned in the beginning, why do we do this? I think we all understand, and some studies have shown, that when the population of the employees at the district, faculty, management, and classified professionals is representative of our student body and our community, our students are much more successful. Our students feel much more welcome. We become, we become a reflection of the community, which I think is important because after all, we are a publicly funded, community-facing organization. We allow the top 100% of students in, and so we need to be an open and welcome space. So if you look at this, so this is from spring 2022. I'm not gonna go through each one, but you can see the demographics of our students relative to our employees and then relative to the most recent data from Sonoma County. I think there are probably groups here where we need to make a little bit more effort to make sure we're representative, which doesn't mean we don't work to make sure every group is 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 feels included, feels welcomed, and feels like we're a place that is a great place to work. The one thing I want to talk about, just in general, about this presentation, is we're looking at numbers, right? But ultimately, we're, and we are an organization that does our work for people through people. So each one of these percentage group percentages is 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 a human being. And so I think, you know, someone asked me, how will we know when we are successful? And a couple ways, when when we become representative. But I also think when culturally we have an institution where each individual feels like they are validated from a holistic point of view, based on their ethnicity, their gender identity, their age, their particular place in the socioeconomic scale at the time, that's, I think, when we will be successful, when we each understand sort of the oneness of all of us and the oneness of humanity, rather than thinking of it of ourselves and the others. And in a lot of these processes that we have, especially being an institution of higher education with qualifications, preferred qualifications, we think of ourselves, that people need to come in and prove to us why they want to be here. I think we need to flip that conversation, so especially with our students. So it's actually, the responsibility is on us to show that we deserve and have a place for the uniqueness of that individual. So I just wanted to say that because when we look at numbers, don't forget we're talking about human beings in 360 and individuals who come to us with all levels of experience, all levels of ability, all levels of of life, home, everything. And yes, we are an employer, but we want to make sure we embrace everyone as community. And yes, we are an employer, but we want to make sure we embrace everyone as community. And I think that's what, that's why the taxpayers pay us. And I think that's why we're in a building like this is because we're trusted with that. So where do we go on? Obviously, we're going to continue to look at hiring policies and procedures. That's important. And again, because we have such a process, we're required to by law, by our EEO plan. We still want to make sure it has that human touch and is open, is fair and is equal to everybody and is welcoming. And it isn't so much a filter as it is a process of welcoming people and to have a conversation with us. I think we definitely have work to do on employee retention efforts. We do do exit surveys and we look at those, but I think also as we work to become a more inclusive and a more anti-racist environment, that's more welcoming, I think we can make inroads into some of our retention efforts. Ongoing professional development is obviously something we need to do. Even the best of athletes has a coach and practices every day. Sometimes we in our institution feel if we train someone once, they should know it for the rest of their lives. And we know that's not true. It's through practice, it's through conversations that we learn how to engage, how to welcome, how to mind our own words. How to be more open to people. So professional development continues. Looking forward to working with the Senate and ensuring that we're honoring the ten plus one and expanding that as we can. The professional development that's offered to faculty as well as all of our classified professionals and management. And while this is an annual report in human resources, we look at the data every day. We, we are always looking to see where in the process we can improve. And where in the process we can smooth things out and where in the process we can make it easier. Still have the information that we need, still comply with the rules that we need to comply with, still ensure we have the data for reporting. But to the person who's going through it, they feel like they're valued. And on that, I thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to open it up to public comment. So if there's anyone here who wishes to make any comments or ask any questions. Sure, maybe just stand up. Is that okay for the, because we're streaming it? It's better if you go up there. People are watching it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one question and I apologize if you address it. I had to run out and unplug my car from the charger. I'm wondering, aware of several faculty, possibly administrator, but or classified professionals that have people of color that have departed from the institution, particularly faculty before they even got tenure. And so I don't know if you addressed debriefing or making efforts to reach out to our colleagues of color that have departed sooner than we anticipated about that. Thanks.
So in particular, so, so we do do exit surveys. As we mentioned, we have not necessarily reached out to a particular group or demographic of individuals who may have, have left us. It's something we can think about, talk about and do. I think if we did it, I would, we'd, something we would want to do for everyone. And we are trying to beef up our exit surveys in general, just so that we understand the particulars of what their experience is here. Those areas that we may have an opportunity to improve on and why the transition was. For some folks, it's life, it's family. For some people, they, you know, it can, it can be many things and, and try to untangle that. So I, I think that is a good point. And I, and there is an opportunity to, to dig into that much, much deeper.
Any, anybody else who's, who's here? And I can't, I actually don't have the Zoom link, so. Is again, you can raise your hand online, you can dial in, you can. I'm going to turn it over to the board unless, again, this is a listening session. We want to hear from people. So if anybody wants to add anything. Okay, then I will close the public comment for now, although if you think of things later, feel free to wave at me or something if you're here and we'll try to fit people in. All right, board members. Go ahead, trustee Benwellis.
Well, first I want to thank you so much for your presentation and I, I am really impressed by all the work that's been done by everyone and, and all of you, of course, and really appreciate it. I just want to say that first off. And I just have a couple of questions. I, I think you mentioned early in your presentation handshake. And I just wondered, I mean, I think that's great that you're using handshake, but I just wondered how, how it's being used. And how does it lend itself to DEIAA things, actually?
So that's a good question. We, so what we've done is added handshake as a standard advertising source, which means we post all of our employment opportunities through them so that the students who are signed up with handshake can be informed about those opportunities. And I believe that's been the extent of our involvement with handshake, but we're certainly open to pursuing other options if there are any in terms of expanding that program.
Okay, thank you. I, I just was curious how it lent it itself to, I know it lends itself to the employment process, but not necessarily, I think, DEIAA. Because it is just a, it's a platform where people can apply for jobs and also you can post jobs.
The, the idea behind adding it as a standard source is really to have the opportunity for recent grads to consider employment at the district and, and to add those new perspectives.
I think so. Anything we can do to get people to come and look at our website and look at everything we do and get a flavor of who we are, because they have to come to the HR, the website first and see the student engagement, the community engagement and be able to click through that, that's a win. And so while it may not be necessarily directly to someone going in Neo and applying, I would rather that they have to go to our website first and do some digging investigation and figure out, is this something that is interesting to me? And is this, does this have something that will, you know, that will make me motivated to come to work and dedicate myself to, to this place? So, so I think there's, there's sort of a, an intangible value, an indirect value to just making sure that the JC is out there and as many clicks, views, impressions as we can get so that people come to our website and start to, you know, exploring who we are.
The other, thank you for that expansion there. The other thing I was curious about was there was a mention of how do we eliminate bias? And, you know, I just, I feel like that's kind of at the heart of all this. When, when we talk about DEI, a lot of people talk about it. There's a lot of lip service that's lent to it. But I, to me, the biggest part as a person of color especially is bias and dealing with bias every day. And, you know, on top of the microaggressions, but really bias in, in hiring especially. And I just wondered how, how are you all, and this is just, maybe it's too big of a question or too broad, but how are you all looking at that in your hiring practices? How, how do you eliminate bias when you're trying to hire folks? And trying to hire the best person for the position, but at the same time taking other things into consideration?
Yeah, I think, you know, Sarah mentioned that there's, there's, there's a few things and it's yeah, I want to tell my personal experience. So there's, there's a few things that we do. So because, you know, bias can be against or before or before. And so when I talk about it, I tend to use the word stereotypes. Just because bias in and of itself, I think for a lot of people, they might hear some judgment in it. And once people hear judgment, we're all humans, this closes, this opens. Which, you know, sometimes can, can hinder communication. But it's really about stereotypes and it's about in training, when we train committees is to help them understand and help certain employee groups understand that old school things, technical term, old school, like letters of recommendation enhance stereotypes and limit the access to different candidates. You know, it's even, some institutions do sort of blind applications where they take the names off. Because studies have shown that when individuals have what people consider to be ethnic names, there's just, without even thinking, an individual will put up a different filter. So when we talk about bias, that's why in this particular program, we talked about sort of a self-assessment. Sort of check yourself conversation. You may not think you have stereotypes and not every stereotype is negative. Stereotypes help us navigate the world and keep ourselves safe and run away from fires and run towards things that are supportive of us. But they can also help, but they can also prevent us from going towards a group of individuals who will really enhance the human experience of the place because we're going towards the people that we're the most comfortable with. Who don't challenge us and who don't like to make us think outside of ourselves. And so I think especially in an institution like ours, it's really helping people understand that we're all teachers and we're all students. We all need to be lifelong teachers and lifelong students and students of ourselves and students of ourselves as human beings. And just to admit that we have a flaw or did something one way, isn't a negative. It's just an opportunity to explore and observe something, you know, without judgment and seeing how that fits into the greater community. So how do you distill that down? You know, I think, you know, Susanna has done a really good job with the hiring training, which was just really direct and well received. So that people who have been doing this for five years and ten years and want to come back and say, well, that's the way we've done it for the last ten years. Why are you changing it? Well, this is why. Because these are the times we find ourselves. This is the organization that we are. And this is why we're going to look at it and change it.
I'd like to, I'd like to add and to your question, trustee Bedwell says, when I arrived, we did two things. When we saw that there wasn't the kind of diverse workforce we wanted to see with the board at the time. And one of the things was the fundamental rule in hiring is that people tend to hire people who look and think like themselves. So that's a bias. So one of the things we tried to do is encourage more diversity in the hiring committee. So that's number one. Number two is the use of monitors. The use of monitors during hiring procedures when I arrived was inconsistent. Some hires would have monitors and some didn't. And we started instituting that all hires would need to have monitors. And the value of monitors is there is equal opportunity employment laws. And when you don't have someone in the room who's a neutral observer and someone who's to guide the committee and train the committee in terms of what they cannot ask and how they can interpret and how they score. Those are really important. I think they've had, both of those changes, I believe, had, have had significant changes in adding to our diversity. There's a sense of accountability. When you serve in a hiring committee, you just can't hire whoever you want. There's rules to the road, there's rules and laws, and we have to follow those. And without a monitor in the room, there's no guarantee that you're going to follow the rules because it becomes a closed hire. The other areas that I've asked HR to look into is how many of our students who attended SRJC are now working at the college? It's something I'm curious about because I do see a lot of growing our own. So I'd like to see how many managers like Kate Jolly. How many faculty members that I see more and more, how many classified professionals attended the JC? The other fact I'm looking for is the geographic distribution. From what part of the state or the country or is it Sonoma County predominant? I think we need to look at where our employees are coming from. And I've noticed personally, when I do the interviews, that we attract many of our diverse candidates from outside of Sonoma County. And if we had to rely on the so-called black demographic in Sonoma County for faculty members, we would still be what we were before. But I believe the last hire this past year, all of our black faculty members came from out of, out of district. And then many of the Latino hires that I've been here, particularly around faculty and, and managers have come from Southern California and from the valley. So it's also important to disaggregate those areas. And there's more diversity than just ethnic. I think we're looking at ways to also look at the LGBTQ, the Amina, Middle Eastern. So there's a lot of broad, I like to think we take a broad swath at diversity and it continues to change the narrative of how do we define diversity. Okay?
Okay. Well, several of my questions have been answered, so I appreciate that. To sort of bounce off what Nancy said earlier. I understand when, when faculty leaves, and I'm, I'm talking about faculty right now, that there's a variety of reasons. But I guess I want to know specifically, did any of them leave because they didn't feel welcome? And I mean, is, is that, you know, it could be family stuff, but, but I'm more interested in did they leave because they didn't feel welcome? And did that happen? All right, I don't know if you can tell me.
I, I don't have that information with me. We can, we can look into see, you know, if, if we have an exit survey with them.
Right. Yeah, because I know there, there would be. So, I mean, so that's sort of the end is the retention and, and holding on to folks and finding out why they actually left, if they do leave. I was wondering on the front end, and, and Dr. Chong just addressed this at least twice about you know, the changes, specific changes that we've done that are, are we doing blind applications? What others specifically are we doing different in our hiring? We talk about it generally. Dr. Chong mentioned two things. Are there other things specifically that we're doing in our hiring practices or, or outreach? That, I mean, are we doing blind applications? Do have we changed the, the qualifications? So it, it doesn't say that it's, you know, doctor, it's preferred. I mean, are those, what, what specifically is happening?
Yeah, so we, we, we don't do blind applications. It's something we discussed, but we, we don't do it. And I know in in job postings in general is just to ensure, and I'll have Sarah talk more about the specifics. Is just to ensure that when you read them, they are welcoming, that the, the verbiage is appropriate. So, you know, no language like energetic or, and, you know, things that are subtle signifiers and telegraph who we want and more importantly, telegraph who we don't want. And things like, you know, letters of recommendation as an example, which can have a deep impact. It was a long practice, but they can have a deep impact on the diversity and they can perpetuate sort of hiring in a similar fashion for the last ten, twelve, fifteen years.
So we don't require letters of recommendation?
Right, no, no. I mean, because it, it does limit, because it limits individuals who generally have the privilege of a connection with a particular professor. It limits individuals who may have gone to school part-time while they were working because they may not have engaged in a traditional four-year institution, research institution. But they still may come to us from a teaching college or from part-time work and have exceptional skills and understand our students.
No, I understand that and support that. No, I mean, I'm not looking for letters of recommendation. I am also wondering, in, when you throw that net out and you've named, Sarah named a, a number of things that have changed in terms of where you're doing the recruiting. So what's working? Are some of them working, some of them not working?
Yeah, I mean, definitely expanding the outreach efforts to different standard advertising sources and diversifying those sources has made a big difference. And also what Jean shared earlier in terms of flipping the narrative in being what we like to call a candidate-ready college, rather than, you know, we're so great and everyone should want to come and work here. So looking at it from that perspective in terms of simplifying the, the process for candidates and clarifying the process. For example, one of the events that we collaborated with the academic senate on last fall was a faculty recruitment open house, which was a virtual opportunity for candidates to learn what it was like to apply at the district. They could ask questions and then the senate created a guide for candidates on how to be successful in the hiring process. So I think the more we can communicate that process to candidates, the more likely we are to attract a more diverse pool and also to make it less burdensome, you know? Instead of requiring 10 different attachments to your application, you might want to simplify that and maybe just have a few. And also offering the, you know, obviously we were, we were forced to with the pandemic in terms of the Zoom interview option. But what we did as a, as a shift is we used to offer travel stipends to candidates to travel here from out of area for the interviews. And we converted that to moving stipends during the pandemic because they were able to participate virtually on the interview. But then we offered the stipend to encourage them to move here. Just a few examples.
So the virtual thing was one of my questions too. So thank you for answering that. And I have to ask, I, we have, you know, I, I reached out to you about a student that went to the junior college.
Yes.
And, and has now graduated from Harvard and was looking for an internship, but it's only with Berkeley. Any chance that is going to expand beyond that parameter?
Yeah, so I, I've met with her and I think our interim VP of Student Services also met with her and I encouraged her to reach out to the institution that she's currently attending to see if they'd be interested in developing a similar program with us at the JC. So we're, we're definitely interested in expanding that to other institutions. Of course, the opportunity to work with UC Berkeley was a great opportunity for us, but it's not the end, it's just the beginning.
Right, okay. And thank you for meeting with her.
Yeah, for sure.
I think I just had random questions because now everything's all over the place. But I did want to know in terms of the exit interviews, has housing or cost of living been an issue for a lot of our folks, especially young ones? Right? I'm not trying to say that I want to hire more younger folks, but I think that it's very important, especially as the institution demographics of students are changing. They tend to be younger, that they're not here full-time, et cetera. So I don't know if that's part of, of something that is being addressed as people leave, especially like classified versus faculty and/or adjunct faculty, associate faculty. The other thing I had was one of the, the question on the, one of your graphs with that the next community or staff, faculty, whatever is lesser percentage than like everybody else had a, like we have whatever 67% Latinos or something. And then, but the hiring or the reflection of our current employees is lesser. And it's the only demographic group that does that, yet in the county they are also the highest. And yeah. And so my question is sort of like, what are some of the things that we're doing to address that? And again, does that have to do, to be honest, has it have to do with economics outreach in terms of the student level? And at the school level in terms of awareness of funding, awareness of, you know, grants, housing opportunities? All of those things which might be outside of the employment part, but in a way it is a part of some of the training on terms of the staff, because it's again, it's one of those hidden things of like, it's an economics issue, it's not just a racial issue. It's an economics issue that it's affecting those communities. So two different questions, but they all have to do with money.
Yeah. So, so I think to answer your, your first one, where we generally hear about the cost of living here, especially housing and the lack of rental units is on the front end. When people are looking to accept opportunities and they look at what our offers are because they're prescribed, right? We, we group people and we match and we want to be equitable in how people are hired and how they're placed relative to education and experience. And in the faculty contract, it's actually by contract language. But that we generally hear it on the front end, that I would like to accept your offer, but and not a lot, but, but it does happen. I think when people are looking at coming to Santa Rosa, coming to Northern California and especially coming to anywhere that is coastal California, most people understand what that's going to be. It is, as someone who recently came here, like the rental situation is, coming from Southern California is shocking. I mean, it's, but it is what it is. And so, so that generally happens on the front end. With respect to diversity, and I think in particular, if I remember correctly, you were talking about Latinx across all employee groups. That's one of the reasons I, I put this light up here because it'll help us when we work within our processes and we work with hiring managers and look at where we're advertising, where we're reaching out to, to ensure that we're also targeting those recruiting resources that might be in particular of interest to Latinx that'll bring them to our website and bring them to our jobs. Especially, you know, it's an HSI institution to understand, you know, who we are. And especially when you look at our students to understand the impact that an individual from that community can have on that community. It's, it's important that. So I, I think that just shows an opportunity and some more work to do. So, so that was kind of a non-answer, but I'm not trying to be vague to your answer, but I think it's just an opportunity that we can look at.
I would add to that. I just know somebody who applied for a position and the position didn't really match what they saw in their head and they themselves were Latinx. And they wished that the language was a little bit more explicit. And my question to that is, do we go back to look at our job descriptions? And the people that were doing that job or the people that are currently doing that job? That they can look at and be like, you know what, I think you're missing this or you should use this other language, especially when you're talking about BIPOC folks. Because sometimes we use a different language or different ways or we get scared. I still get scared with some job description. I'm like, I can't do that. And then they're like, you're really, you're already doing it. I was like, oh, I didn't know that that's what it was called. So I don't know if we go back to the actual employees and be like, you see this job description, is this sort of what you are doing, not doing? Is there language that we can change? So really looking at the actual people who are doing it. And I say that because like I said, a lot of Latinx folks, they really do not believe that they can do that job while they're already doing it. Like you don't imagine how many people have to kick in the butt of like, you have to apply, you're doing it. But then they get the other side of like, oh, it was too vague, not explicit, and those are not my skill sets. I wish it was more of this part rather than that part. And they don't get to do that until they're like potentially at an interview. And they're great candidates for us, but they're going to say no because they're like, oh, it wasn't really, I'm not a match for it. Because at the end of the day, the day-to-day that you want me to do is not what this job description really felt like or read to me. So I think it's both ways, right? Like how I reach to them, but also are we using our own folks to let us know, are we doing these job descriptions? In a, in a way that, you know, people from those communities could actually understand it? Or if we're doing a targeted, right, hire of specific folks?
Right. So I, I think that's an important point and realize, especially as it relates to, let's just say classified job descriptions. There's a process here. It's a negotiated process. We do involve the hiring managers to make sure that the duties and responsibilities and the qualifications in fact do match and are aligned. And then within sort of the structure of class structure, which Sarah can talk about because we're in the middle of a classification study. That's where the job descriptions go through. So there, there is a bit more of a process here because we are a public institution, because we do have the rules of classified service that is very different than private industry that can just change things on a dime or, or, or craft a particular position around a particular unique employee. And they can figure, I can turn it this way and that can fit them here. We're different because, because of the rules in which we operate in. But we still work to make sure that our job descriptions are as accurate as possible. That's one reason why we're doing the classification study is to make sure that what in fact people is on the description matches what they're doing for exactly the reason that you talked about. That's one of the reasons. One of them is to make sure that we have the right individual, that the individual has the right job description around them. But also if a position like that becomes open, it's exactly what we need. So that's, that's a continual assessment, though sometimes it happens in phases here. And the same with, you know, faculty positions. We, we definitely, you know, work with the department chairs, faculty in the area to make sure that what the department is looking for and, you know, the vice president and dean's there to make sure that what the faculty is looking for is what we're hiring for. I don't know if I answered your question, but that was a long one.
I have another question.
Yeah, Trick, I'm going to get through everybody else.
I had an economic question, but you'll follow up on that anytime. I know the cost of, of living, whether you're to buy a home in Sonoma County or to rent is getting higher and higher all the time. So I'm sure that's a major problem for, for people coming to this area. But I just want to thank you both for your presentation. Very, very informative and really appreciate it. So thank you.
And, and I also want to, or did you want to add something?
I just want to add one thing that we do offer to candidates early on before they're accepting positions or as the job offer is made, as we have a few different resources that we offer for those moving from out of the area. We have a relationship with the local exchange bank for a housing assistance program, which offers reduced fees on loans for new homes. We're also a part of the Homes for Heroes program, which is, I believe, established in Petaluma for local agencies, health, education and other areas where they offer reduced services. And then we do a very informal housing referral program internally as a college community where if members of our community have rental opportunities or even homes for sale, we offer that information up to our new hires during that hiring process, just to provide some resources about the general area.
Yeah, thanks, because that was going to be one of my questions about it because I, you know, met some of the new faculty. And again, like anybody, they were from out of the area and they just didn't know the area and they were trying to figure out where can we move, where can we live? Where, you know, they didn't know the neighborhoods. They thought Roner Park was too far away because they didn't know it was really just a couple of miles down the road. But, and also help with, you know, how am I going to find childcare? How am I going to find schools? And, and I just wondered if we were trying to, and I know we do a lot of informal support, but it seems like the more we could formalize that, I don't know if it would be through HR or through employee groups or something, but it just seems like the more that we could figure that out because it is, I think, a more difficult place. And, and in line with that, one of the things I was going to ask about, and I don't know if you keep data on this, but the one thing that I would want to know, you know, in your charts about here's who's applied and here's who we hired, would be also be like job offers. So like, did, did we make job offers? How many people, like, did we make job offers to that then turned them down? And who, who are those folks? And again, why? And, and then the other thing I'm going to throw out, which is different, and I'll just give you all my comments all at once, was you know, I have heard a lot more about, you know, recommendations for, you know, blind screening. And one of the things I've heard is not total blind screening, but that at least I know a lot of job positions require supplemental questions of finalists, that at least those be blind. Because I know at this point, in fact, the last position I hired for, they weren't. And I, and I think there is definite bias when you've already looked at people's, you know, statements and resumes and that then you already have a sense of, you know, what you think of the applicants and then so that that affects how you view their, their written questions. And, and I think it would be good to look into at least doing blind screening of any kind of extra writing. So that at least you're looking at that, not knowing who. And that, because I know, for example, I think the county of Sonoma is doing that right now. So it's just something to look at. So anyway, those are, those are my, just throw them all out.
Good suggestion. I appreciate it.
Yeah, this is more of a comment. I don't know if it's a question. There's a question in here somewhere. But a lot of our conversation, I think, has been geared towards faculty. And I, I was just wondering, it has been just an observation that much of the, the management hiring is done from within the classified ranks. I don't know if that's a correct impression or not. So I was wondering, which is like a good thing. I mean, that's homegrown. That's not a bad thing. It's just an observation. But I was wondering if the same kind of evaluation and rigor is going out in terms of diversity and trying to get more applicants for classified positions and management positions. And I know we hire sometimes from within, and I don't know when you have to do that or you don't or, you know? So I don't know that detail, but I know that happens. I was just wondering if we're, if we're giving the same kind of focus and rigor to classified employees and management is my question.
So, so to answer the first part, so you know, the district is still under reord process, which I think was presented to the board. Sorry, I'm looking at Kate a few years back with an understanding that positions would go internal first. And under Title V, which actually requires open and fair recruitment, you can go internal as long as the head count doesn't change. So in other words, if we were, it's kind of, in other words, so there is kind of encouragement to do it. Generally, every recruitment, if we weren't under this, would be an external recruitment where internal applicants can apply with external. But because of the particular situation, the unique situation that this particular district is in, and with an understanding with our classified unit, it's usually internal first. And then for a period, a short period, and then external if that doesn't work. So, so that's probably why at this particular time, the district is seeing more internal recruitments. It's still open. But that's, that's why that's happening. If that was your question. I would agree, you know, with regard to classified professionals in particular. One of the things I mentioned, and I've done at a previous institution, was sort of a marketability, a workshop, a hiring, not even a hiring fair. But, and we opened it up to classified individuals. We reached out to the community, everything from women's shelter, NAACP, Latinx organizations. Because the goal was if we were going to have district dollars spent on district salary, let's have it spent on district, you know, human beings, district residents. And so it's something we can look at. And, and perhaps this would sort of address trustee Martinez's comment about Latinx, about beefing that up to make sure that communities understand what it is to apply to us. Because we are, you know, a public institution is a little bit different than private if that's the only place an individual has worked. And why, why we're, why we're worth the effort? You know, how we pay, we're competitive, our benefits are exceptional. Good luck finding any place else with the state-run retirement system. It'll, it'll support you and your family for lots of time. I'm so, but people don't necessarily understand that if they're in a different type of work, if they've never been exposed to it. So I think we can do more with that and reach out to our local community to show the JC is a great place to work, especially for classified professionals. So we have that reputation that if I'm looking for a job, I'm going to go to the JC, not like it's some walled garden that you can't walk in and see the hiring managers because it's hard to get the hiring managers here rather than going to a local business and just saying who owns it or who runs this place. We're not built that way.
I'd like, I'd like to make some closing comments. I want to appreciate the work that Jean and Sarah and Suzanne and others from HR presented today. I think this is a, the reason we wanted to do this was engage exactly in the kind of conversation we're asking. But I'm, I'm really pleased with what we're, the direction we're moving in. We're really open with Jean coming in as the, you know, a new voice and in HR and really appreciate the work that Karen Furukawa did while she was here. But I think we have opportunities now as the world changes to do things differently. We never thought we would do Zoom interviews and that's become typical now, right? But I see, still see a lot of people who apply for jobs that I get to interview who are leaving tenure track position, tenure positions at other colleges to come here to teach because of our reputation. And also rank 10 is important, you know? And I commend our AFA for advocating for that and continue to advocate for that. I also think that the classified survey for employees is something that we want to keep in mind because as Terry said, it's economic. You know, people choose jobs because they want to be able to move here, live here and sustain their families. And when we made the difficult decision, I think Terry may have been the only one here or and Dot and Maggie was the, the management salary surveys that we did to upgrade management salaries. and Dot and Maggie was, the management salary surveys that we did to upgrade management salaries. And when I meet with search consultants about VP positions, they said salary's not a problem, you know? So people don't leave here because, and I believe because they're underpaid. I think they come here because the reputation of the college and that it's a good place to work. It's a great place to work. We're not without our problems. And in terms of our commitment to continue to diversify the college, we're committed to that. And the retention piece, of course, we said we're going to look into that more carefully. And we have heard also anecdotal, people were not comfortable here, didn't feel welcomed. I can tell you that when we hired some administrators here now and faculty members, people now will drive them around and take them to different neighborhoods, talk to them about schools, childcare. And that is working pretty well. It could probably be better. So, but I think that with the emergence of the affinity groups particularly, I think now there's a so-called organized intentional group that's here to kind of embrace, have a welcome wagon out. And so does HR with the efforts that we did. Harvey Hansen was great at Shone Farm for many years, but it may now be a new type of Harvey Hansen. We have this nice event that we did with all the affinity groups. So as we shift and the college and the community shifts, we need to shift as well. And I think we're doing a good job of that. And that's why it's so important for the board to give us feedback, like on job descriptions, on how we do interviews. And I'm still not pleased with the number of applicants and the number of throughput for people of color. It's still very, very low, which shows us how much work we have to do. But at the same time, we have to make sure that the process is fair too. We don't want to go overboard and hire people because of their ethnic, you know, diversity. They have to really be talented and they are, there's a lot of talent out there. We also have to bring our committees to be wide open and see more of the value of having diversity. And ever since I've been here and I've had conversations, difficult conversations with Academic Senate presidents, they get it and I think they deserve a lot of the credit for the diversity we see today. And I think they're going to continue to provide the leadership as they should in the 10 plus one around hiring practices to make things more equitable. And I've told Nancy Persons and Julie before her that I'm committed to that and so is the board. We want to see more diversity. We want to have excellence in so many different ways. And again, I like to make the quote, without diversity, there is no excellence, you know? So we need to have all of it. We want it all, we want the talent, we want the diversity, we want the retention. And I think these are just the beginning of conversations we can have to get there. So I'll stop with that. But again, I really want to appreciate the good work that you guys done and the work that's going to come ahead. Thanks.
Yep, thank you very much for the presentation. And, you know, to just all the HR staff for the work that you're doing and to all the groups on campus who are supporting these efforts.
And so this is the first presentation of this. I will be sending this presentation out to Academic Senate, Classified Senate, bargaining units, DCC if they wish. And if any of those groups wish a presentation and a discussion within those venues, we are happy to be there and engage. So I just wanted to share that with the college community.
Thank you, thank you for that. And thank you for everybody who attended in person and everybody who's attending virtually. And I'm going to adjourn the meeting, we're going to be in closed session at three and then we'll be back for our full board meeting at four. So thanks a lot.